Chairman Guth, we are now live and you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 2021 Pitt County Planning Board Meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order now, and if I could ask, Tab, if you would do the roll call, please.
Fred Austin.
President.
Bay Barefoot.
Here.
Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck. Brad Guth.
Here.
RJ Hamby. John Landren.
Here.
Steve Little.
President.
Tucker Moore.
Here.
Maria Rogerson. We have a quorum, Chairman.
Thank you. Now, if we could all bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you, and if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Number three on the agenda is approval of minutes. If I could, hopefully if everybody's received the minutes, if I could get a motion to, for those to be approved.
Motion to approve.
Take the vote.
Ms. Barefoot.
Right.
Motion to approve those. Who was the second?
Don Brown.
Don Brown seconded. And Ms. Tab, if you could do roll call vote for approval.
Fred Austin.
Approved.
Bay Barefoot.
Approved.
Don Brown.
Approve.
Brad Guth.
Approve.
John Landren.
Approve.
Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore.
Approve.
Ms. Naomi.
Thank you.
Okay, the number is 99.
Our next item is public addresses to the board. I don't believe we have any of those at this time. We'll move on to our public hearing for the North Carolina 43 Corridor Land Use Plan and public hearing with Eric Gooby. Mr. Gooby.
And Mr. Chairman, this is James again. Tab's just trying to get Ms. Naomi to join the meeting, so I just wanted to let the Public Information Office know that she's probably going to be calling in, Ms. Naomi Buck. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we do have a public hearing for the NC-43 South Land Use Plan. This is the, kind of getting towards the end of this process. It's taken a little over almost a year to get through. We do have a, we are working on finalizing the draft plan, and tonight, we are asking the planning board to have a public hearing. The purpose would be to gather any additional comments or input on the plan, and following the hearing, we'll be asking the board to forward a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And the Commissioners will hold a public hearing on March 15th, which time they'll consider whether to adopt the plan. And also, we've had a working group that's been overseeing the development of this plan. They had their final meeting on January 27th, and all the members did concur with adoption of the plan. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to our consultant, Jay McLeod with Stewart, and he'll do the presentation to outline the parts of the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Mr. McLeod?
Thank you. One second, let me bring up the second screen. Is everyone able to see the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all so much for having me this evening. It's my pleasure to introduce you to the, well, I understand you've had regular updates, but it's my pleasure to introduce you to the final adoption draft of the NC-43 South Corridor Plan. As Eric said, my name is Jay McLeod, and I work in the municipal planning group of Stewart. Our offices are in Raleigh, but we do have offices and other branches across the state. And we were joined in partnership in this planning effort with Kittleson, and on the line tonight is Dr. Zachary Bug, who is a senior engineer with the Kittleson Associates, which is a transportation planning and engineering firm. And I may have not mentioned, but my background is in planning, municipal planning particularly. So tonight, I'd like to kind of take you through the details around the project initiation and the need for it, talk a little bit about the public engagement that shaped the vision and goals for the area, and then go through the background conditions and analysis and the recommendations of the plan, and then answer any questions that you might have and/or need more information on in order to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. This corridor, as it leaves southeast from Greenville, has been experiencing a number of changing conditions and growth demand that have led to a necessity for an update to the land use plan in this area. Of those, and probably most important are the ones you see here, there was a recent, there is a planned project for a widening of the corridor down to the Hollywood crossroads intersection with Worthington Road and Mills Road from Fire Tower Road. That project, when we started the plan, was a little bit more imminent, but because of the NC DOT budget problems last year, it has probably been pushed a little bit closer to 2029, as we currently understand it. But regardless, there have been a number of land development activities in the area, including annexations from the city, the extension of sewer service to serve the recently constructed schools in the area, and that has lead to additional development in the area, as well as traffic congestion concerns that led the county and their partners to want to take a better look, a closer look at the area and think about how it might evolve to fit, better fit its probable future. So as you, the study area is about nine and a half miles long. It starts just south of Fire Tower Road and Bell's Fork Road area, goes through Hollywood Crossroads, which isn't the geographic center, but it is kind of a focal point, and then ends in South Chikot. And so the study area really is about 1,000 feet on either side of the road, but then it also kind of balloons out in the middle where there is the potential for additional sewer service and sewer connections to serve higher development. And I'll show you a map of that in a little bit, and it'll make a little bit more sense. And the character goes primarily from a suburban character in and around Greenville down to kind of an ex-urban character and Hollywood Crossroads, where you have kind of scattered but more rural development, and then to a definitely rural agricultural nature in the south. As Eric mentioned, the project started in February, and it's been a little bit around a year. We did have, at an unfortunate event, the, obviously, the COVID pandemic has changed the way a lot of governments have had to react, and I'm glad to see everyone's able to stay safe in Pitt County and are doing your, you know, doing your best to soldier along through this with the rest of us, and I'm sure everyone's as hopeful as I am that this will one day end, but in general, we kind of kicked off public engagement in the beginning. We had a series of public meetings first to gather input about the corridor from the people that live and work there, and then next to kind of roll out the recommendations. And throughout the entire project arc, timeline arc, there were meetings between the project team, that is Stuart and Kittleson, and the, and the Pitt County staff who are very involved, as well as the partner agencies that formed the working group. And those partner agencies included people, representatives from Eastern Pines Water Corporation, which provides water service in the, in most of the study area, Pitt County Schools, obviously, the Pitt County Planning Department, the Greenville Utilities Commission, NC DOT, was on the working group, a couple representatives from there, and the Greenville Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Association, and we're also fortunate enough to have one of your ranks on our, on our team as well. So the working group really kind of formed the technical expertise and the local perspective that helped shape the plan throughout the process. And here we are, kind of in the final stages of review and recommendation by the appointed and elected boards, which would be yourself and the Board of County Commissioners, in order to make sure that we receive any additional input that you also have and perspective that you have to give as well. The public engagement started with a community tour back in March, right before everything kind of shut down from the pandemic. That included also three stakeholder interview groups where we interviewed and spoke very, in small groups with property owners, business owners, and local stakeholders in the, in the area and around the corridor to get their perspective on the issues and conditions that the corridor would be facing. Of course, the working group was involved throughout the process in tempering and evaluating the analysis and providing perspective and guidance. And then there were two pretty large format public online surveys that were disseminated to gather information on vision and goals, as well as reaction to the draft recommendations of the plan. And then two public informational meetings were held and broadcast, and, you know, a lot of places have had to struggle to react to the pandemic and how does public engagement look? And I think what we found, being a professional that does this in different locales, is that actually, we've, we've found a way to kind of engage people where they want to be, which is on their couch looking at their phone. A lot of people won't go to a public meeting, but a lot of people, a lot more people will dial in from the comfort of their home while they're having dinner and kind of keep an eye on what's going on. So I think we've, we really found that this has, you know, expanded opportunities for engagement with different crowd that maybe wouldn't normally engage. But again, on the other hand, though, I want to point out that the Pitt County staff went above and beyond to make sure that they were meeting with the stakeholders face to face when the stakeholders were comfortable with that in the corridor to help make sure that the word was out there and everything was on the table, and there were no surprises for anyone. So they, they actually held a few additional public engagement events throughout the process in order to make sure that the people that were going to be most affected in the corridor were having a say. And then here we are, of course, at the public hearings, which are public meetings. So to kind of recap what we heard in that first survey, which led to the development of the goals and the vision for the corridor, and then from the vision and the goals flow all the recommendations. So that all the recommendations in the plan should point back toward achieving that vision and achieving that goal. And you can kind of see here what we heard from people. And, and it was really, you know, it was really interesting to see the perspective of people, understand how much they value rural character, the open space, the natural resources, proximity to Greenville, and their desires. That kind of led to some more visioning efforts where we heard that, you know, they wanted to reduce congestion and have more housing and more businesses and control growth, make sure it's a safe roadway. And so those kind of all led to the creation of a vision statement for a corridor that has really a pretty diverse character from the suburban outskirts of Greenville to the very rural areas down to the south. And so the vision kind of had to reflect that and had to pay homage to the suburban character and the developing character on the northern end, the needs that people had for goods and services close to where they live, and then also to the agricultural heritage and the rural character of the, of the kind of middle and southern parts of the corridor. And the goals that support this vision statement are to, you know, have a safe and efficient transportation system that accommodates all types of users, whether you're a walker, a biker, or a driver, to coordinate public and private investment so that everyone's kind of paddling in the same direction, and there's a logical pattern of growth. To establish a small commercial node at the Hollywood Crossroads intersection that would serve new residents, and to preserve the rural character and agriculture in other areas where it makes sense to discourage sprawl and not have that growth happen just yet. So that kind of takes us to the development of the vision and goals for the area, and now I would like to introduce you to the background and data analysis that went on that then led to, when combined with the vision and goals, led to the recommendations that shaped the plan. Of course, we looked at traffic volumes and this being a significant commuter corridor for people working in the Greenville area. And you'll find all these maps in the plan. We looked at planned and existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities, of which there are very few currently, but there is a desire and previous planning efforts to help link pedestrian destinations like parks, schools. We looked at agricultural resources, and you can see in the pink there, those prime farmland soils really pop out on a soils map. And then this is that utility service that I was telling you about earlier. You can see in the kind of upper left corner there where the red line takes a bend and there's a blue circle, that's the existing pump station for the DH Conley School, and those red lines are the force mains that sewer, that where sewers pumped in the area, where sewage is pumped. The yellow, blue, and pink areas are potential sewer service areas from existing pump stations or pump station expansions. And so looking at this, you can kind of really get an idea about the changing nature of sewer service and the potential for sewer service in the area, and that's kind of why that study area kind of balloons out in the middle to kind of capture a lot of this, and because we knew that this was going to be an area that was likely to experience change. We looked at existing land uses. You can see in the dark green agriculture obviously is a primarily dominant in terms of geography, and that was a way of understanding, you know, more what's on the ground now. And then we also conducted a suitability analysis that looked at physical and economic characters like proximity to rooftops, homes, right, density of homes, proximity to key intersections, potential availability of sewer or water or electric service, distance from commercial centers or commercially zoned land. And when you kind of combine those in aggregate, you can get an idea of where land is most currently suitable for future development. And so this is another bit of information that was weighed by the working group in the development of the future land use map, the revised future land use map for the area. So the themes, of course, are the transition of the corridor from suburban to rural, the valuable character of the area being rural and agriculture to a lot of the people that live and work there. There are some non-residential uses scattered kind of up and down the corridor. And then we also, of course, have, you know, previous investment decisions have been driving sewer access, and that's driving up the development pressure in this area because it's a largely undeveloped area relative to the other kind of spoke roads around Greenville. And then bicycle and pedestrian conditions were mostly nonexistent, but there were some plans to bring those forward. And that brings us to the plan recommendations. Early in the process, we kind of developed this conceptual framework to use for explaining how the corridor might look. And once we got the working group to look this over, we developed it further, and you'll see how that kind of fleshes out in the future land use map. But for the most part, you know, it's kind of that theme we've been hearing already, is there's a suburban growth coming from Greenville in the north. We have the potential for sewer service in the middle area where it, around the Hollywood Crossroads, which is that red dot in the middle, where there might be an opportunity for suburban commercial services to serve that residential growth, and where you're in fact already seeing annexations and potential development plans for new residential growth in that larger area. But then, at the same time, there was a need to keep the rural character and the agricultural character, especially as you move further south and southeast along the corridor. And, and those themes we kind of carried through in the making of the recommendations, because this is also an interesting corridor in that it really is on a jurisdictional kind of fault line between Greenville, expanding south and southeast, and between Pitt County, likely to be, you know, in operate, in, in, and, and most of the areas in the corridor are likely to be in Pitt County for a very long time. So again, focusing growth where there's sewer service, building the goods and services at Hollywood Crossroads, allowing that to happen for the people that are going to live there. And then when there is new development, if it's going to be in areas that have environmental resources to allow and encourage conservation subdivisions that kind of protect those resources, but then also balance that against the need for growth. You see here, the orange dots represent areas that may be suitable for enhanced pedestrian crossings in the future as development occurs. Those would need to be made in coordination with NC DOT. The purple areas represent collector streets that would be appropriate in these areas to serve as development occurs. Now, it's important to note that this is not a promise or a pledge by the county or the city or the state or anyone to come in and build these roads or take land. These collector streets are there to indicate that connectivity is desirable if and when, if and when land changes hands and or develops. And these would primarily be a signal to the private development community that if they have a plan for a particular piece of land, that they should be aware of the county and the city's plans that there should be connectivity through those areas as they are subdivided and developed. You can see another key factor here is the extension of Mobley's Bridge Road to the Hollywood Crossroads intersection from the east. That was in a previous planning document, and it does help to kind of create a better east-west connection through the area and overall connect it better to the, kind of the, the area around Greenville. So that Hollywood Crossroads might look a little bit like kind of the commercial areas you already see in the Fire Tower Road intersection. And so you kind of have a top-down view from what that might look like on the left, and then kind of a character area precedent on the right. So that's what you might expect to see there. There was a lot of focus on this area as it is expected to be a, an area that changes. We did look a lot at the transportation infrastructure, and you can see kind of, in addition to the purple collector streets, you see here also proposed enhancements to bicycle or pedestrian facilities to connect into the overall plans for greenway connectivity in the area, but also to connect to those pedestrian activity centers like the parks and the schools. And so this kind of component of the plan helped flesh out the existing bicycle and pedestrian planning efforts, but also helped up, bring them up to speed with what the new vision for this corridor might be. And again, this area does have a high water table. The sewer service is what's likely to allow new development. But in addition to that, there needs to be coordination with the Southeastern Drainage Commission for stormwater facility and infrastructure upgrades to make sure that the new imperious surfaces from that development doesn't have detrimental effects elsewhere. And so that, in addition to working with the Greenville Utilities Commission to discourage force main sewer connections and utilize gravity sewer connections where appropriate. So now we get to the fun stuff that planning boards are most excited about, because you all deal with rezonings all the time, and so this is, the planners always flip to the future land use map first. So these are our existing future land use maps for the area. They're kind of at a different scale. The one on the right is for Greenville, and you can see it's a little bit more zoomed in. And the one on the left is for Pitt County's existing future land use map. Now, the objective of this plan is to replace these with the new future land use map, which is on the next slide. You can see in this, in these two views that really, there's a lot of similarities between this and the future plan, the future land use plan. You kind of see suburban growth radiating out of Greenville. You see the identification of a small commercial node at the Hollywood Crossroads location in the Pitt County future land use map. It's maybe envisioned as a little bit less dense of a commercial node, less intense than in the Greenville, but it's still there. And then you can kind of see, especially in the Pitt County one, that there's the rural character kind of continues southward. So like I said, the goal is to replace that with this new future land use map if the plan is adopted. And then this would be the reference that you all would look to whenever there's a time to make a rezoning decision in this area. You can kind of see the environmental areas that cover flood plains and open space and make those areas constrained in terms of their development potential. You can see in red, the suburban commercial service areas that would be appropriate for commercial uses. Yellow is kind of that suburban residential growth pattern that would need sewer service in order to develop at the densities that are envisioned in the zoning districts that are appropriate. And then you can see a respect for agriculture and rural character in other locations along the corridor, particularly moving southward. And as well, a recognition of the existing commercial node, a kind of rural commercial crossroads that exists in Chikot. There are very detailed future land use character areas that accompany that map, and they accompany, and they would be used by you in, in hearing and, and understanding and determining the, the appropriateness of rezoning requests. And this is another tool. This is a zoning crosswalk table that would be a useful tool to you as well as a planning board in communicating the appropriateness of rezonings. And so on the left-hand side, you have the future land use character areas that we just discussed, and across the top, you have the Pitt County zoning districts. And then where you see the dark blue is where zoning might be likely appropriate, and where you see kind of the light blue is where it's more of a maybe, it may be appropriate. But, you know, this is just one data point that you all would use when hearing and making recommendations on land use development proposals and rezonings. And so the way this might be used is, you know, if a parcel was looking to rezone to general commercial, and they were in that suburban commercial service area, you would kind of scroll over and you would see that it's dark blue, which means that likely that is an appropriate rezoning. Now, there would be other things you would take into account, of course, but this is kind of just one of those data points that you can use. In addition to this crosswalk table and the future land use map, there are some implementation steps that outline short, medium, and long-term timeframes for achieving the goals of the plan. This is to kind of create a work plan, and it also designates the responsible entities, whether it's the local governments, different utility, different divisions of local governments, state government partners, potentially the regional partners, which brings me actually to something I should point out. I would, I think I should point out, I don't know if I mentioned the Greenville Area Urban Metropolitan Planning Organization, but they were a partner as well on this. And so that's kind of in the, in the last bits of the plan is talking about implementation, and I just want to kind of draw your attention to the top four, which are in the short-term timeframe. And I don't know if you're able to read that, but in number one, it would be to formally adopt the future land use map and the corridor plan itself, and then start using it when making decisions on rezoning and land development applications in the corridor. Number two would be to review the existing zoning and subdivision regulations and think about potential modifications. One might be, for instance, to create standards for driveway access so that we have fewer driveways opening directly onto the corridor, which would help reduce traffic congestion, which was a goal that people expressed. So that's an example of that, and that can be accomplished by county staff and city staff, planning staff. Number three is to coordinate with NC DOT to enhance pedestrian facilities and intersection crossings as needed along the corridor and at the major side streets to make sure that this highway doesn't wind up cutting through neighborhoods and cutting neighborhoods off from each other when it's widened. And then number four would be to improve the stormwater facilities and infrastructure that we talked about that's going to be necessary to accommodate that growth, be proactive about establishing standards that, you know, capture and mitigate stormwater runoff. So I know that was, that was a fire hose of information. I know that you all have been updated frequently along the way, and so I'm happy, I'm thankful for your time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information you may need in order to make your, a recommendation. So thank you very much for your time, and I will stand muted.
Thank you very much, Mr. McLeod. Do any of the board members at this time have a question or comments for Mr. McLeod before we take public comments?
I have a question about what has been discussed addressing the, the growth of the suburban areas is certainly going to put more pressure on the school system. And that's not probably in our wheelhouse, but I'm shortly, certainly sure it's going to impact the schools. DA's Conley, I think, is at full capacity or overcapacity now. So I know it's a long-term thing, but, you know, is anything being addressed towards that?
I think I can probably take that, Eric, and then if I miss anything, you could probably step in, but the Pitt County Schools was a partner in the development of this plan. They did express the understanding that their school capacity projections were based on the current future land use map and not this future land use map. They also expressed the understanding. They also expressed the understanding that the sewer service area is going to drive more development. And that one of the reasons people are moving to this area is because of the schools themselves, because they're highly desirable school districts. So the updating of the school projections or school capacity analysis was not explicitly considered as part of this planned process. Did I capture everything on that, Eric or James?
Yes. And again, that has been one of the growth factors in all this, Mr. Austin, is that we realize that the schools are very much an attraction to some of the younger families that have children school age. Just so you know, the sewer that's provided out there in that particular area started because the schools were in need of sewer service. So it's kind of strange how everything one particular improvement led to another, led to another. Ultimately, the map that Jay showed with the sewer shed around the Hollywood Crossroads area is really a result of the sewer lines that were put in place to some of the schools. And now there's additional capacity and that's being utilized to grow that area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Any other questions from the board? All right. Do we have any members of the public here that would like to speak or ask any questions of the recommended plan?
Mr. Chair, you might want to open the public hearing if you're asking for a comment now.
Do I need a motion to open the public hearing?
No, sir. That's your discretion.
All right. Well, I will open the public hearing then and ask for any comments from members of the public. I'm not hearing any interested parties speaking up. I don't see anybody on the list making motions to want to speak or be recognized. If that's the case, then I'll just close the public hearing. And I'll ask the planning board if I hear a motion for a recommendation regarding the North Carolina forty-three corridor land use plan to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Sheriff, if I may, this is Eric Gooby.
Yes.
We do have essentially two recommendations. I'm going to pull those up on your screen. The first would be to, our staff recommendation is to recommend adoption of the proposed forty-three South land use plan. And again, that's also in accordance with the recommendation of our working group. And then the second action would also be to recommend amendment of that comprehensive, of the existing comprehensive land use plan to refer to the NC forty-three South plan. As Jay mentioned in his presentation, the intent is for that future land use map component to supersede what is in our current comprehensive plan. And so we would amend the future land use map in that document to refer back to the forty-three South plan.
Okay. So we really need two recommendations.
Yes.
Just to be clear, Mr. Truman, those two can be bundled together in one motion if the board finds that convenient.
Okay.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the proposed forty-three South land use plan and amend our twenty thirty comprehensive land use.
Second emotion.
Mr. Austin has made the motion and we have second from Mr. Little. Ms. Otten, if we could do a roll call vote for the remaining members of the commission, please, or the board, please.
All right, Fred Austin.
Approved.
Fay Barefoot.
Approved.
Don Brown. David Davenport, sorry, Brad Guth.
Approved.
John Landron. Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore.
Approved.
All right. Thank you very much. We will recommend that to the county commission at their next meeting, I believe. And we'll move on to our development review and Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have cheap farm preliminary plan. This afternoon, we received a letter from the developer. Mr. Bryant, on behalf of our client, I would like to continue this plan until March seventeenth, twenty twenty-one Pitt County Planning Board meeting. Please contact me if you have any questions concerning this request. This is from Mike Baldwin of Baldwin and Associates on behalf of Grimesville Construction. So the board will need to consider a motion to continue the plan to the March seventeenth planning board meeting.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from a member of the planning board to continue this consideration?
Motion to continue the plan to March the seventeenth.
Second, Don Brown, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Tab, did you get those?
I did not hear who made the motion. Is that?
I believe it was Fay.
That's right.
And Don Brown, second.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I got it.
And if you'll call the roll for the remainder of members?
Fred Austin.
Approved the motion.
Fay Barefoot.
Approved.
Don Brown.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
John Landron. Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore. Tucker Moore.
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we'll consider that at our next meeting in March. Mr. Bryant, we have number seven, Abbott Trail.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Up next, we have Abbott's Trail. This preliminary plan, a few days ago, the developer decided to request a withdrawal. Dear, dear Mr. Bryant, on behalf of our client, I'd like to withdraw this plan from the agenda of, for the Pitt County Planning Board meeting scheduled for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Please contact me if you have any questions concerning this withdrawal request. Mike Baldwin of Baldwin and Design Associates and Grimesville Construction. And the board will need to consider a motion to withdraw the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Do, do we hear a motion to withdraw the plan?
Subdued.
Believe that was Mr. Little.
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second, John Landron.
John Landron is second. And Ms. Otten, if we could have a roll call vote for the motion to allow the withdrawal of the plan for Abbott's Trail.
Fred Austin.
Approved the withdrawal.
Fay Barefoot.
Approved withdrawal.
Don Brown.
Approved.
Brad Guth.
Approved.
John Landron. Steve Little.
Approved.
Tucker Moore.
Approved.
Okay. Thank you very much. That plan has been withdrawn. And we'll move on to Mr. Gooby again with chapter one sixty D update.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do have a brief update for you. We've, I think the last time we had talked about one sixty D was back in October. We gave a rundown of what one sixty D included. And just to kind of give a recap, in twenty nineteen, the Journal Assembly did adopt a session law which included, which includes a new chapter one sixty D of North Carolina general statutes. This is a complete reorganization and modernization of all the planning and development regulations for the state. This, this previously repeals both enabling statutes for the counties and cities. Those are previously two separate statutes. Counties were one under one fifty-three A. Cities were under one sixty A. This combines cities and counties under one unified chapter, which is now known as one sixty D. So it also reorganizes all those statutes in a more logical and cohesive order. Previously, all those requirements were just kind of scattered throughout all the statutes. And this puts them in a in a much more logical progression in more orderly fashion to find those requirements. One sixty D became effective immediately on June nineteenth of last year. And also allows local governments to have until July first of this year to amend any ordinances that are affected by these requirements. We have identified, we've gone through several of our amendments for, or drafted several amendments to several of our development related ordinances. And then the largest or the bulk of these changes will occur to the zoning ordinance. Some sections are almost, almost like an entire rewrite of some sections of the ordinance, just to be able to make sure it's consistent with these general statutes. We've also proposing several other amendments that aren't related to one sixty D, but are also proposed for clarification and consistency purposes for, for us to enforce the ordinance and to have those requirements. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of the major changes based off one sixty D. And you've got a more detailed list in your application package on page twenty-three, where we've gone through each section and kind of identified what was changed in each section. But just some of the major ones. First is we're changing conditional use permits to special use permits. Under the new statutes, we can't use the term conditional use permits anymore. And so all of those have to be changed over to special use permits. Well, the problem we have before is that our ordinance has conditional uses and special uses currently. And so the conditional uses have traditionally gone to the Board of County Commissioners. The special uses go to our Board of Adjustment. Last year, when we tried to make some changes to special use permits and to conditional use permits, the Board of Commissioners indicated that they wanted to retain some of those. So we have divided them. Basically, they will both hear special use permits, but we have classified them as a class one and class two. So the class one being the old conditional uses, class two being the special uses. There is also broadened conflict of interest standards. The statutes basically make it a little more clear as to what constitutes a conflict of interest, both not only for the Board of Commissioners, but any appointed boards. So that includes the planning board, boards of adjustment, and also staff as well, that we're not to take any action or take any sort of make any kind of votes or decisions on projects or developments that we have some conflict of interest in. The statutes, we've also clarified our quasi judicial procedures and evidentiary hearing requirements to, to make sure they're consistent with the statutes. One of the other big changes is also vested rights. There are changes in, in what is, what constitutes a vested right, how long those vested rights are valid for. And also incorporates what's called, what's called permit choice. So basically, if you have a permit that you have applied for a permit and at some point after the, the application has been submitted and your permit being approved, if the development regulations change, the statutes give the person the option as to which regulation they want to apply to their permit. And so we've added language to the ordinance for that as well. We have to also ensure that the ordinance terminology is consistent with the North Carolina general statute terminology and the definitions. So we've gone through, make sure all the definitions are consistent and make sure everything matches what's in the statutes. We're also taking efforts to incorporate official state and federally approved maps by reference. So if we have a floodplain map as those maps are updated at the state or the federal level, we can incorporate those by reference. So we don't necessarily have to go back into the ordinance every time and make changes to update things like dates or effective anything that, anything that makes those maps effective. So we can just refer to those maps and say that we can, that the one that is the most most recently approved or is it the current official map is the one that applies. There's also some clarification to the enforcement procedures, things like notices of violations, stop work orders, how permits have to be revoked, et cetera. And of course, also going through the entire ordinance and updating all of our general statute references from that one fifty-three A to one sixty D. So sort of the timeline we're on for consideration here, again, we're, we're finalizing those draft amendments. Want to present the full overview of the amendments to the planning board next month. And then hopefully have another public hearing similar to what we have for NC forty-three South. So the planning board have a public hearing for your review and recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. And then we'd like to take that to the Board of Commissioners in May or June for their consideration and adoption. Again, keeping in mind that we have to have all this effective by July first to be in compliance with that, that new chapter. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gooby. Are there any questions from the planning board? Comments? Thank you for all the work that staff is going to be doing and has done already on updating all those. All right. So we'll move on to the next item, which is Mr. Rhodes and updating on some informational items.
Sorry for the delay. We're switching off here and let me get something back up on the screen. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We really appreciate y'all staying with us tonight. It's not often we have two items that are either continued or removed from an agenda or withdrawn. So just know more than likely you'll be seeing that at a future meeting, both of those cases. So we'll keep you posted on those. Couple of other things before I actually get into the items, I would just like to acknowledge our chairman as well as David Davenport. They both served on our NC forty-three South Committee. We had a good working group. That group did recommend that the planning board consider recommendation on to the commissioners. That group brought a lot of good information before us. Just in particular, the late breaking news about the Greenville Utilities sewer service that was going to be extended in a larger area than we were anticipating. So we were able to incorporate that into the plan. I think we have a very, very good realistic plan of what's going to happen in that area in the upcoming couple of decades. So again, thanks to Mr. Guth and Mr. Davenport, both for serving on that committee. One other thing, you guys have been involved with a lot of things with us, with the planning staff over the last year. We've got this information right online now. Our twenty twenty annual report, if you go online to our webpage, you'll be able to see a summary of, of the major projects that we were involved with last year. Even with the pandemic, I will tell you, development activity has only picked up. It has not slowed down. You've seen that with some of your meetings, the number of subdivision plans coming through for review. Our NC forty-three South plan, our new hazard mitigation plan being involved with census twenty twenty, just to name a few. So a lot of activities going on. We're preparing now. We've got a work program for this full calendar year. Another busy year in front of us. And just so you know, what we're looking forward to next year and certainly what this board would be involved with. what we're looking forward to next year and certainly what this board would be involved with. If NC 43 South, that land use plan moves forward, we're looking at doing an update of the full comprehensive land use plan for the entire county. So that's a major undertaking and we're starting to request funds for that project. And hopefully our Metropolitan Planning Organization will be involved with that for the transportation component. And we'll get some funding through that organization. So again, a lot of things went through last year, a lot of new things coming this year. Other things, you dealt with two rezoning requests last month. These two items for Gladden Forest and the Ochoa Properties, they were dealt with at Monday night's commissioners meeting. Both were approved. The Ochoa property, you might remember that, that was for automobile repair shop. There were some concerns at our board level. I know we've got some comments from an adjacent property owner about signage and the lighting of that signage. Just know Eric was able to work with the agent and for the request as well as the adjacent property owner. The signage, the size of the signage was significantly reduced to about a third of what could have been allowed there. And there was also some accommodations to ensure that the illumination didn't disturb anyone in that area. So that was, again, part of your comment, part of your discussion last month carried forward to the commissioner meeting. Interestingly enough, and I guess timing wise, the subdivision plat that was called Chief Farm Road, we dealt with a road name change for that at Monday night's meeting. So affected Monday night, it is no longer Chief Farm Road, the portion that you're dealing with on the west side of the new Southwest bypass, that's now officially named Avret Farm Road. So that might just change the subdivision name too. We'll see that in the future. We've got a number of other items that were included in the package. Tab had pulled together several items that were newsworthy here locally. That's included. And I mentioned our webpage. You're welcome to go see our annual report, any of the other plans that we're dealing with, such as the NC 43 South plan. That draft plan is also located on our planning page. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all the informational items I have. I'm open for any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Rhodes? Thank you for all the hard work that staff is clearly working on this past month and past year. Do we, is there anybody else? Are there any public member still here on the call or in the meeting? I don't see any. If there's anybody else that needs to address the board? All right. If not, I'll adjourn our meeting.
Hold on.
So moved. Thank you, sir.
All right. See you next month.
Thank you, everyone, for joining in tonight.
Have a great month, everybody.
Here, Roy.